Ready for comment tonight. We'll start this meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from April 18, 2022?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to approve the April treacherous report?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We do have an agenda amendment. We're going to add number eight. E, and it's regarding a change order for the Hammer Road sidewalk project. I had to take a motion for that, correct?
Yes, and is that just something that just came in?
Yes, there was a little change order too, so we'll do that today.
Okay, so the process for that is we need to take the motion and a second to amend the agenda to add that item. We'll have to make sure that the minutes reflect that that particular item was amended during the meeting and placed on the agenda during the meeting. And the reason why is because that is information that we had just received, was received in the last 24 hours. Business hours.
I'd say it was in the last business hours, yes.
So, right.
Yes, but it's, I don't know, a minor change order and we just don't want to hold it out for two weeks.
Understood, just the sunshine law was changed. We need to make sure that it's notated correctly in the minutes. And then Lisa will also have to have an amended agenda showing which item was added posted and made available.
Okay, are there any public comments on that? Yes, sir.
Well, let's get a motion and a second first.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll second.
Okay.
All right, my name is Ed Troper. I live at 1235 Fond de Rosa Drive.
Okay, sir, this isn't the time for that.
These are just comments on amending the agenda to add the sidewalk.
Okay, that wasn't clear, sorry.
Yeah, I apologize. This is something new to the sunshine law.
Okay, will that be at the end?
Yeah, we'll get you there.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First one is Lisa.
Yep.
Old business. Kevin, do you want to touch on it?
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted Zest to report on a couple of things that are coming up in the agenda and that the supervisors have talked about in the past with respect to the issue of the short-term rentals. The, there's two items that are on the agenda later in the agenda. The first of them is an amendment, a approval to begin the 30-day review of and to set a public hearing for proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance relative to the short-term rentals. That particular zoning amendment that is proposed would remove the allowance for short-term rentals in any residential zoning district, including rural residential, RN natural, RLD residential low-density, RMD residential medium-density, and RMF residential multifamily. That would allow for short-term rentals then to continue in commercial, industrial, and multi-use districts other than the residential. Anything residential would have a permit use. Any short-term rentals that are currently being occupied would be grandfathered and would continue to work under the exonerating. Any short-term rental that's continued to be, that is currently operating would be grandfathered and would continue to allow to be used. So, once again, that proposed zoning ordinance would remove the use of short-term rentals in all residential districts or any new short, any new short-term rentals. The process is that that has to be kicked over to the planning commission, and the planning commission would have 30 days, both county and local, in which to comment on that. The supervisors would then need to hold a hearing. It is proposed that that hearing would be held at the June 20 meeting. And then after that hearing, you know, we can figure out when then that can be approved or considered for approval. The second item to report out on is with respect to a standalone ordinance relative to short-term rentals. One of the things that had been discussed was a need to protect the quality and the characteristics of the residential neighborhoods that we have here in Summit Township and to protect the general health and welfare of the residents of those neighborhoods. And so the manner that is being proposed to do that is to create a licensing ordinance for short-term rentals. This would be for all short-term rentals, starting with a, I believe, January 1 is when this would start. The requirements would, and just in summary form because it is quite lengthy, the requirements would restrict any unreasonable noise from certain time periods, 10:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. almost days. It would require certain acknowledgements and notifications relative to parking. It would require logs of tenants. It would require maximum occupancy of properties pursuant to bedrooms. It would really regulate these in such a manner that is appropriately, to be appropriate to them, regulated, but also in a manner that would help to preserve the quality and characteristics of the neighborhoods that we currently have. That ordinance and the motion that's on the agenda here today is to approve that for advertising, and that will be approved for advertising for approval at the June 6 supervisor's meeting. Now, copies, now that these are being presented to the supervisors, copies of those would be made available to the public, and you can get those from Tammy.
Thank you. Okay, number eight, A, new business, Julian Lane Stormwater Detention Pond Discussion.
Sure. So, there's a detention pond on Julian Drive, or Julian Lane, Lane Drive, I'm sorry. But it's on the cul-de-sac portion of Julian Lane, Julian Drive. I'll have to talk someday. But it's a kind of orphan detention basin, so thereby we don't have an agreement for the operation and maintenance of the basin. So, originally, we thought that the basin was a sediment pond that was left over from the development of that phase of Town Hall Village, because the plans that we originally found showed a, either a ditch being put in there or a storm sewer. And as we were looking at ways, we were looking at originally the storm sewer, that section, and as we were looking at easement agreements, we discovered that it was in fact an detention pond, had calculations of signing a sealed by a professional engineer. And as such, it kind of changed the nature of the project. It was no longer just putting in a pipe to collect storm water. If we did any kind of underground, it would have to be an underground detention basin, went well beyond the scope that the township could undertake at that point. So, that being said, it's a detention basin, and typically the property owners are tasked with the operation and maintenance of detention basins on private property. Typically, there's an operation and maintenance agreement. Typically, there's a homeowners association that takes that on. But in this case, we have neither one. So, we discussed with our attorneys the best method to approach this, and we looked at the primary beneficiaries of the creation of the pond, which in this case was the seven houses that were built along the cul-de-sac street, because without the pond being built, the cul-de-sac street and the houses thereon would not have been able to be permitted to be built. So, with that in mind, we went and got some quotes from three contractors, and then we addressed the letter to the property owners with the seven quotes, as well as the sketches of what needed to be done in case they wanted to go and get a quote of their own. And basically, kind of left an open time frame to get this done, just to get a conversation started, and I believe we have some residents here tonight that discuss it. So, with that, I've kind of opened it up to discussion.
Does anybody like to speak regarding this? Name and address also.
My name's Richard Hoffman. I live at 1845 Julian Lane. I'm here with my neighbors, also your constituents. We're from the east end of Julian Lane that this is affected. I'm here to address the unreasonable and threatening letter that was received telling us that particular stormwater and road runoff ditch on the north side of Julian Lane was our responsibility to clean out and maintain. This notion is ridiculous, seeing how there was no maintenance plan established at the onset of the development nor the turnover point by the developer. Anybody that has viewed this neighborhood can attest to the cleanliness and upkeep by the residents. I think it's safe to say that if this spillway had been our responsibility, it would have been kept up on a regular basis at a much lower expense. This spillway takes all of the road runoff, which contains oils, salt, and whatever else from the road surface. A majority of the stormwater deriving from the homeowner's property is absorbed into the ground within their yard. That's why you have a non-pervious restriction on the sides of your properties. I feel this order by the engineer and rubber stamped by the supervisors should be eliminated on the grounds that the area in question does not carry any clear directives on maintenance. The township should want to err on the side of caution and pick up the expense of the initial cleanup as not to alienate the voters in this area. I think through discussion, not dictatorship tactics, this can be dealt with professionally. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Evening.
Evening.
Robert Gander, 1844 Julian Lane. And again, I was involved with a couple of you gentlemen, whatever these original discussions started about the, at the time called, you know, the ditch and cleaning it up and the, you know, and it was a kind of an open discussion. There were ideas thrown out with regard to culverts potentially and as one viable option. And then we moved, you know, just general cleanup of the ditch was also discussed. And so, you know, that was a good, open discussion, felt pretty good about that. And then, you know, to, now we've, we're to the point where, you know, we received the letter, the letter that will be forever known as. You know, it did, you know, to be honest with you, it feels a little bit threatening whenever you receive the letter and, you know, it's basically, you all are responsible for it. If you don't pay, we're going to put a lien on your property. That's a little bit harsh. And at the time, you know, when we were having those discussions, we really weren't talking about pushback to the homeowners as far as expenses for that. It seemed like the township was taking ownership of it. It's like, hey, it's a storm runoff area. Yeah, we got to do something about it. And now we're to the point where it's, you know, it's on you guys. So, didn't really appreciate that, to be honest with you. I think a little more open discussion with the, with everybody involved would be helpful. And I hope we can, from this point, move it forward in that vein, and I think come up with something I'm sure that everyone can agree with, but like to think anyway. And that's basic, that's basically it. Thanks for your time, and I look forward to further discussions.
Thank you.
Evening, Kevin Cooney, 1800 Julian Lane. Plain and simple, what they said. I support. The one thing that I do have concern about, and the term transparency, I think, was thrown out early on. I own the property to the north of the subdivision where the water basin, the retention pond, ultimately drains onto. And I received notification at one point a while ago, out of the blue, of what the intention was to tube, to create a, take a retention base which mitigates water and then create a piped system directly onto my property. We could, I was going to call in and we were going to have some discussions about it. I know we emailed back and forth. So, my problem more is, I support everything they are saying, but again, the transparency really disappointed me because that flows onto my property, and discussions that occur should have included me and my wife from the get-go, that being the case. So, I just wanted to bring up more of the conversation of transparency as well as supporting that as well.
Thank you.
Good evening. Lori Vermaldi, 1824 Julian. I've had the pleasure of meeting with some of you directly on this issue, Matt, Mark, the co-ordinator we had a meeting on. I also echo the previous comments from the folks that were up here, my residents. I definitely feel like when we initiated this conversation, there was a lot of cooperation between us as residents and you as board members of the township and helping us to determine what's the right thing to do with this sewer drain ditch, whatever it is. And from the start, I feel there was acceptance on your part to go ahead and come up with a solution, and you even published in your newsletter where you had it listed as a project for the township, not for the residents. So, again, I echo that. I think the letter was not intentionally malicious, but yet it felt like that since all of a sudden our communications were cut off and the letter presented and not a call and say, look, this is what we've decided on. I know some of your neighbors don't know this. Let's get a conversation started. So, that transparency was definitely not there, and we were definitely blindsided. You put us, some of us, the address and myself, in a difficult position with our neighbors because we really thought you all were going to help us come up with a solution, and that solution was driving towards the township taking care of this with discussion on prospective maintenance that could be the responsibility of the residents there. So, I again just echo that we were going in a direction fully understanding that there was going to be some township remedy to this, township ownership of it. There was neglect when the developer put this in from the township and/or developer's perspective of identifying ownership and maintenance of this sewer drain. That neglect does need to be remedied today. I still want to go ahead and positively, positively enforce cooperation, but for us to be tasked with it at a significant sum of money, I think is unfair and unruly to us residents, and I ask for reconsideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Rick Duda, 1825 Julian Lane. I don't have much to add, but I do agree with everything that my neighbors have said. What do you guys have legal right to dispend this expense on us? Can anybody answer that?
Well, these orphaned stormwater management basins are, you know, a concern not just in Summit Township, but throughout your county, a lot of different cities, boroughs, and municipalities are looking harder and harder at these because, you know, it's, it's, the stormwater management is a necessity. You know, back when this was done many years ago, it probably wasn't handled in the right case. But today, you know, stormwater management is a responsibility of the subdivision, the developer, the homeowners association actually taking it over. You know, we send out letters every five years.
Send almost constantly?
Yeah, but it's, it's on a ongoing basis if the stormwater ponds are maintained and upkept and fashioned. This one being an orphan stormwater management from many years ago, just hand us up to cracks. There's several of them around. So, you know, we're trying to resolve it as far as the legal standpoint, stormwater management, I believe, was mandated by the DEP and, you know, the common law, and, you know, we're lucky with the tasks of enforcing stormwater management in our community.
Do you say this is only, this basin is only 10 years old? Did I hear you right?
Say that again.
Do you say this basin is only 10 years old?
No, 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 this one, Matt, you know what era?
Early 90s.
Early 90s.
Yeah, that's when this subdivision was pretty much starting to build, yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, pretty much every subdivision, you know, the newer ones have stormwater management basins, you know, they're looked at on a regular basis to make sure they're maintained properly and that they're functioning to their design capacities. It's an important part.
The stormma, stormwater management is responsible for that, sure. But did I hear you, Mark, you say that the, once the subdivision is built, it's turned over to a homeowners association if you're a member? But that's not in all cases, maybe in some areas, but that's not in all cases. That's not in all case, township, I know that. A lot of it's turned over, but to the homeowners association, yes. What if they have one, right?
The township's not.
The township takes care of a lot of them.
The townships never take them over personally.
I disagree. I disagree, and I have reasons to disagree, but again.
Do you have any that are maintained, under maintained by the? Unless it's some sort of a community, you know, stormwater effort that a township undertakes. I know Moncrief has a, you know, a few flooding areas, and they've built and constructed stormwater management facilities. One of them I know would be next to Intermediate High School over off of Cockey. You know, that was constructed to alleviate downstream flooding problems. And that was primarily because stormwater management rules weren't in effect early on.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any stormwater facilities that are accepted by the townships or boroughs. In fact, the, when a new subdivision is proposed, the, it's typically a requirement of the stormwater management ordinance to ensure that there is some level of perpetual management operation of the stormwater facilities as part of the subdivision. And I know that in the Summit Township, the stormwater management ordinance, if there is not an HOA, it would typically fall to the owner of the subdivision, and then that flows through to the individuals who purchased the property from that owner. And so, the way that, I believe this one was determined was through some sort of topographical or hydrological analysis to determine where the stormwater goes or comes from that flows into that basin, and that's how the properties were identified because the owner, the subdivision owner doesn't own it anymore, and the developer doesn't own it anymore. They sold all the property to the property owners. And it was, you know, but for the existence of that stormwater facility, those properties would not be able to be developed. And so, that's how those particular properties were identified. So, the obligation of the owner would flow to an HOA. If an HOA doesn't exist, then we can stick with the owner, and then they flow through to the property owners that buy from the original developer.
Well, you know, that's what happened with this, and I hope we can come to some kind of resolve that makes everybody happy. And one last point, I personally, I'm sure my neighbors don't feel the same way, I don't like being threatened with a lien on my house. I don't think that's right, especially after you just all of a sudden drop this bomb on everybody. So, I hope we can come to some kind of resolution. Appreciate your time, guys.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. B, PA Department of Transportation, three-year agility agreement. Do I have a motion to sign into this agreement?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pension plan amendments. Lisa, could you patch those please?
So, every three years, the township, well, pensions are required by the IRS to be restated. We had attorneys Nadia Huard and.
David Lozier.
David Lozier from the Knoxville review our pension plan and recommend amendments, one of them being definition of the term spouse has been expanded to include same-sex individuals if they are lawfully married. Reference to age seventy and a half is replaced by age seventy-two. Lifetime stretch over lifetime is limited to so-called eligible designated beneficiaries. Minimal amendments as required by the IRS.
Okay. Do I have a motion to amend the pension plan?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve or deny waiving a special event permit for the 2022 car show benefiting Emma's footprints.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion to approve or deny change order for Hammer Road sidewalk in the amount of $2,279.30.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Matt, you want to just touch on that?
Sure. Thanks. So, the reason for this change order is to reconcile quantities to the final agreed upon quantities between us and Amadola. The original contract amount was $88,814.75. The amount of this change order, as you stated, was $2,279.30, and then the final contract amount would be $91,094.05. And with this, there would be no change in the time for the project.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Land development.
So, the first item that, our land development would be composite flats located at 8100 Hawthorne Drive. This is an amended land development, parcel ID number 40177319.18 in the industrial park. The owners are proposing to build a 23,000 square foot addition to the existing 52,800 square foot commercial building as well as associated car being spaces. We received this plan in February of this year in front of the zoning, I'm sorry, the planning commission, March 14. the planning commission, March fourteenth, uh, in front of Erie County Planning, April seventh.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve or deny amended land development plan for composite flats?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The next item I have would be new realty LLP at 8670 Peach Street. Parcel ID number forty sixteen seventy-two dash thirty-six and thirty-eight point oh-one. The owners are proposing to build 14,000 square foot addition to the existing 28,000 square foot commercial building and associated parking. This plan went from, uh, we received it in March. It went in front of the planning commission and they recommended approval conditioned upon a photometric lamp provided and went through, um, Erie County Planning on April twenty-eighth. Now, Matt and I did talk with the electrician and they are going to reduce the movements in and out. That's one feature there in the realty.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. Do I have a motion to approve or deny the amended land development plan for the new realty LLP?
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, motion to approve or deny? You want to take this one, Tammy, or?
I'll take it.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Uh, so the new, uh, new realty land development plan you just approved, uh, they're revising their stormwater plan. They're gonna add a additional volume to the existing wet pond and then put a rain garden in between the two wet ponds. Uh, with that, we are holding a bond from last year when they were doing development, uh, forty-one, or forty-eight thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. Uh, we have since received a new bond for the new construction, which takes everything they've done and revises it. So with that, we release their prior bond from 2021 and we will hold on to the new bond for the new construction. So it's more administrative.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, do I have a motion to approve or deny the reduce of stormwater bond for new realty LLP in the amount of forty-eight thousand three eighty-nine forty-four?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, where, where is this located?
This is at New Motors at, uh, Super Dealership.
Okay.
Not that far.
I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve or deny subdivision plan for Summit View? Parcel forty-six dash nineteen dash twenty-five and twenty-six RMD.
So this is located on Pondrosa Drive. Parcel ID numbers forty-six nineteen twenty-five and twenty-six located in residential median density. The owners are proposing to subdivide, um, one seven one acres to parcel ID forty-six nineteen twenty-six. And then the bay in that portion should be an integral part of forty-six nineteen twenty-five. Then the parcel will be subdivided into two parcels, fourteen A and fourteen B. The fourteen A will be conveyed into point six six five acre parcel. Fourteen B will be conveyed into point six six three acre parcel. It's split in front of the planning commission on May ninth. Recommended approval.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve or deny?
Uh, motion to approve. I'll second.
Any questions?
Yes, so. Lauren Klansky, six eight nine one Pondrosa Drive. This was what was displayed when you were discussing the last one, so that's why I asked the question about Pondrosa Drive. This will go into, my questions will also carry over to the future discussion later on in this meeting. Um, and I understand that the planning committee approved the split of this land. However, this is going to be used to build cabins. I just had my home appraised at $450,000. I'll bring you the paperwork. I find it unacceptable that land is being split to build cabins, diminish the value of our homes in our neighborhood, not even going to short-term rentals, which we'll get to later. It will be quite a robust discussion, I'm sure. But the point is, why would we permit, when every lot up there pretty much has an acre of land and we're splitting this, there's a deep creek that feeds into Walnut Creek in the middle of this land, why would we split this to allow cabins and diminish the value of our homes that we've worked so hard for to establish? So I'm not in favor of this, the splitting of the land, and I'd like to know more around why, when every other land is not split, not one in that neighborhood, but yet you're going to split this one. Two, in essence, support what we'll get into, short-term rentals, building cabins and renting them out in the middle of the residential neighborhood. So I'd ask that you reconsider the splitting of this land to build homes for short-term rental. Thank you.
Thank you.
Or can I, can I ask you a question, Tammy, about this?
Sure.
So, um, you, you say that this is an R, was it RLD?
RMD.
RMD?
Yes.
Is that correct?
We can't hear you. We can't hear.
I'm sorry, that's typically not a problem for me. I've been talking very loud.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, RMD?
Better.
Thank you. Um, and so that's residential?
Medium density.
Medium density. And the, uh, the property here, you're going into, it's like two, two lots of approximately point six acres each? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And is that permitted in the zoning ordinance?
Yes, as long as they meet the four to one ratio of the size of the lot.
So as long as they meet the four to one ratio of the size of the lot, so?
And as well as, um, we have a chart here that three corners, you have a middle area of per dwelling as well as setback, three corners, front yard, side yard, conversion or setbacks, as well as a minimum square foot of a family, a single-family home.
So based on our zoning rules, the, the split of the property, the proposed zoning, or excuse me, the proposed subdivision of the property meets all of the zoning rules that we currently have?
That's correct.
And the subdivision land development rules that we currently have?
Yes. You are correct, it does, by five feet, but it does not take into consideration that there's a creek going right down the middle of it.
And that may come into play for the Fish Commission because of feet in Walnut Creek. And if there'd be any contamination, could be a problem.
Five feet and a creek. That's in the residential area of the average price of a homeowner, $400,000. I mean, it's pretty significant. And just to clarify, if I may, how many feet is required to be between each lot?
The, the setbacks, the side setbacks or?
What's setback?
Sideward setback is ten feet.
Ten feet.
Thirty feet from front yard, fifty feet from rear.
So it's ten, thirty-foot setback, fifty-foot rear yard in RMD. The planning commission approved your recommended approval, correct? So it meets all the criteria?
Does it with the creek? Well, that's something they have, well, they go to get their zoning permit, all of the feet have to be crossed and they're not, you know, out the eyes. Um, they're, they're responsible for making sure when they go to build that they're fifty feet from a creek bank or whatever, to make sure they're not building in wetlands or whatever. But no zoning permits have been issued for a single-family home.
Yeah, so we, we need to be clear as to what it is that's being asked for approval today. So what's being asked for approval today is of the subdivision. Those subdivision rules we have are complied with. And there's, I'll say, very limited, if not no discretion on whether you can approve or disapprove if the rules are met. And so we have the rules that are met for the subdivision. That's what's before supervisors today.
Are there any other questions?
Can this be delayed for further investigation? Do you have?
There's nothing to investigate.
It, it, it meets all the?
For the subdivision.
Subdivision requirements.
Are we motioning on the motion?
You do, you have motion and second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Are there any questions regarding this subdivision? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, recommendation began a 30-day review of and is set public hearing for proposed amendment to ordinance, ordinance 2021-02. Um, and this was for the, I believe, the June 20th?
Yes, so thi, this is the zoning ordinance amendment that we previously discussed, the purpose of which is to remove short-term rentals from being allowed in all residential districts within the township.
Okay.
We would have to hold a hearing. It's going to be sent to the planning commission, it'll be sent to the county planning commission and the local planning commission to determine whether it is compliance with the, with the, uh, the, uh, plan. Yeah, with, with the comprehensive plan for the township as well as the municipality's planning code. And then once you receive their recommendation, um, we'd be able to move forward. You are required to have a hearing, a zoning hearing on that as well. We're antici, we're suggesting that that hearing can be set for June 20th. And then, um, for the supervisors to consider it at a meeting after that date.
Motion?
We, we were requesting a motion if, um, on this, yes.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll second.
Any questions? This, if you could step up there.
I'm just making sure it's going right now. Uh, my comments to this, uh, my name is Ed Troper and I live at 1235 Pondrosa. The residents of the Pondrosa neighborhood are concerned about the short-term rentals or Airbnbs in our area. Businesses in the past have been rejected and we wonder why this business has been allowed. Now, an expansion at the one location, converting it into a compound by adding two cabins is being considered. That relates back to that split of the property, the two lots. The lots and dwellings in the area have been required to be at least an acre in size and the dwellings to have at least 1,200 square foot minimum floor space on the first floor. Cabins are not the type of construction that would fit with the rest of the neighborhood. If this is allowed to proceed, there'll be potentially, or potentially be five short-term rentals in less than a half-mile stretch of Pondrosa Drive. I would like to see a hold on any additional short-term rentals until a final resolution has been decided. Please consider a moratorium on any changes until a permanent regulation goes into effect and then not allow grandfathering as the previous businesses that were attempted there were not allowed to be grandfathered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let me address that quickly.
Yep.
So, um, the supervisors don't have as much discretion as I think they would like in terms of how a lot of this works. And the process that is used for zoning and the process that is used for the regulation of short-term rentals or any other business is pretty well set forth in law. And i, i, if you step too far afield of that, you're, you're opening the township up for a significant amount of potential liability. And so what is being proposed today, this particular motion, is to remove the allowance for short-term rentals from all residential districts. The law is such that if you already have a short-term rental use in a residential district, you're going to be allowed to continue that because that's the way the grandfathering rules work.
Why were the other businesses not allowed to continue them if they worked that?
I, I don't know what those other businesses were. But nonetheless, the way that it works is if you stop using your particular, it's, it's called a non-conformant use, right? The grandfather, grandfather is not really the term part, it's a non-conformant use. And if you stop using your property as a non-conformant use, if you stop using it as an Airbnb after the new regulations are put in place, then you lose the permitted use of the non-conformity. So, so long as it's continued as it is today, you can't expand upon it, you can't make it larger, so long as it's continued to use after this new, these new rules come into place, you're allowed to. Well, once you stop for a period of a year, you then, you lose that and it would revert back to what it approved use would be, which would, in this case, would be residential. So that's what we're talking about here with the zoning. With respect to the restrictions, which is the next motion, and we can go through them in a little more specificity if you'd like me to. Um, I, I can discuss, you know, exactly what the townships want to be contemplating. But those rules will go in place for every short-term rental in the township because every short-term rental in the township is going to be required to register and license as a business, um, and, and under this particular rule. Some of the things I think that you're contemplating and that you're questioning the law hasn't caught up to yet. The problem with short-term rentals is that while we've been experiencing them for a couple of years, the law isn't known to react that quickly. And so I think what's being proposed by, to the supervisors, and will be considered at the next meeting when we get to that next motion, um, is probably one of the more aggressive stances towards the protection of residential neighborhoods that you'll see in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And it's going as far, I think, as the current, along the current practice in Pennsylvania laws. So we'll get into the specifics of that in a few minutes, but I wanted to make sure that everyone was clear for what's being voted on. What's being voted on here is to send the zoning ordinance amendment to the planning commission to remove it from residential for the future. The next, the next thing that's being looked at are what the regulations will be for everybody.
Can I, can I ask one clear, fine question, please? You, you outlined it very clear. I have one question to go to what Ed just shared, and that may be coming next. I want a question to go to what Ed just shared, and that may be coming next. Our concern is, obviously, the land that's been divided, been approved because it meant all compliance regulatory, forget it. If that owner of that land quickly puts something up before you get to your hearing, and we all have the opportunity, and quickly puts somebody in it to run it, she's going for an Airbnb. And that's what we want to stop until we can get this resolved. So help me on that, please.
Right. So the municipal planning code has a provision on that, which says that if we're anticipating a change in the rules, there comes a certain point in time when we can't prevent somebody from using their property if it is permitted under the rules today. You're asking if we met that threshold. And I'm going to answer that question by saying I'm not in a position to answer that because it's a very fact intensive analysis and we don't have all of the facts on those particular properties right now. I've advised townships and others on this now for fifteen, sixteen years, everything from, you know, businesses coming in to strip clubs. And the analysis is always the same. It's very fact intensive and I am not going to give a legal ruling on that in the public right now, because that is a legal ruling that needs to be given to the supervisors at such point that the question is right. There's no zoning applications before the township today for the operation of any new short term rentals. So I can't give you the answer you want.
It might not be the answer you want, but I just want an answer.
We're keeping our caliber and we're keeping our eye on it. Does that help?
Yes.
Are you saying that you can't stop them from doing anything while you're doing this consideration?
I'm saying, Mr. Troper, you've gone out and you've hired an attorney, Gary Natuski, I know because he's reached out to me, and I think that as a private landowner and a private resident of the township, you need to have that question for him as to what your options are. I'm going to keep my legal advice to the supervisors as to what their options are within the attorney client privilege until we're ready to publicly disclose what that is.
Okay, splitting up that lot that ties into this, is that going to be a delay in consideration until it's inspected or resolved, whether that can go through because of the possibility of the Fish Commission being involved?
That has nothing to do with the subdivision. You're raising questions pertaining to where the property, where a building can go on a property, that's under the zoning laws. And there's no zoning application before us. So you can't put a property straddle the stream, a building straddle the stream, you can't put a building too close to a stream bank, you can't build in floodplains, none of that is required of supervisors right now. You're asking us to make a determination before anyone's even put a plan in as to where any properties would go. And so we can't speculate because we don't know what exactly the plan is for that property. We know what you're anticipating, we know what you think, but until we get something on paper that's applied for the township, we can't give you a specific answer.
I have a question. Was the township or was the supervisor aware of the Airbnbs that are on our street right now? And if not, how come? You know, after all, it is a business and wouldn't that be under your jurisdiction or are you wanting to know what businesses are being run in some township?
So I'm going to answer that from a legal perspective. They're currently permitted to operate in the manner in which they're operating in the township and there is no rules on the books requiring the registration and licensing of them with the township. That is the ordinance we're going to talk about next. But as it exists, when the zoning ordinance was last put in place, what was that, twenty nineteen?
Twenty one.
Twenty one, twenty twenty one. It was not as hot button of an issue then as it is now. It was not a, my understanding based on conversations we had is that it was not the concern that it is now because it was negatively affecting the residential quality of the residential neighborhoods that we have. And so it wasn't addressed to the extent that it's being addressed now.
I have a question. The ones that are grandfathered in, will they still have to abide by the new restrictions?
So they're, they, the grandfathering is related to the zoning use only. The new rules relative to, that we're going to talk about next, every Airbnb, every short term rental in the township will be required to comply. So there's no grandfathering for the new rules that we'll be talking about next.
And what's the grandfathering? Explain that.
If there is a short term rental that, the question is what's the grandfathering? If there's a short term rental that's operating in a residential district today, in a residential zoning district today, and the rules change like the supervisors are contemplating, and that is to remove the ability for short term rentals to be located in residential districts, that new rule will only apply to new short term rentals. Let's say that the supervisors went in and re-zoned all of Upper Peach Street to be residential. That doesn't stop those businesses from continuing to operate because that was a permitted use at the time they were there. It's the same issue here.
Still not clear as to why they could continue to open an Airbnb in this interim Why are you discussing now until it becomes a regulation?
Because the rules aren't in place. And I suggest that you have that conversation with your attorney relative to what your rights are relative to that. We could talk about having rules to restrict, we could talk about a business regulation to require everybody who's working at Upper Peach Street to wear pants. Doesn't mean that we require them to go out and buy new uniform pants, you know, until those rules are in place. We've got to wait until the rules are in place.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to ask one question. Do any of you gentlemen have an Airbnb on your blocks?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
Do you live in a residential neighborhood?
Yes, I do. It's a twelve block subdivision, one of the homes that are in that twelve block.
How many are in that? How many Airbnbs are on your block?
One.
Not five? Not five? Like what we're contemplating. Think about it. Would you want it? That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, my neighbors don't like it either.
Well, one, but five? It's a little extreme.
I'd want to run.
Less than half a month.
And there's twenty four houses? Maybe thirty at the most? You've got twelve and one. We've got thirty and five. Contemplating.
So would you like me to, so you've taken the motion and second on this zoning? Do you want to take your vote on that so we can move into the next?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I'm going to say, uh, thank you. Motion to approve or deny for advertisement of the short term rental ordinance adoption. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll start it.
Okay, let's start.
Matt, do you have that ordinance keyed up on the overhead? Tammy, do you have that ordinance keyed up on the overhead? All right, so let me just explain what is being considered. So the ordinance is going to apply to all short term rentals irrespective of when they operated, or when they began to operate, but it does not apply to a hotel, motel, bed and breakfast, inn, boarding, or rooming house, or group home, because those are different classifications under the zoning ordinance. And because in those particular properties, there are owners or representatives of the properties on a twenty four hour a day, three hundred and sixty five day a year basis in order for them to operate. So this is a different category of transient use that is being considered. So let's pull down to page three if you would. There's going to be a declaration that any of the violations of this ordinance are determined to be a public nuisance. Go ahead, we define bedrooms through the same definition that is used in the construction We have a definition of a contact person, where there's going to be somebody who is able to be a contact person for every short term rental operating in the township, where they are on call, we have a twenty four hour emergency contact number and they need to be available within one hour or be notified if any violation of the ordinance so that can be addressed. We define a short term rental as an establishment which under rents any area of the establishment to one or more individuals for compensation or fee, including offer work, shape, kind, and type, whether or not involving overnight accommodations, or separate sleeping quarters for a period of time which is primarily less than thirty and seven days. Does not include at night breakfast use as defined by the zoning ordinance. We have unreasonable noise, would be any sound for a continuous period in excess of fifteen minutes, or two or more periods in total of thirty minutes, any four hour period from essentially hours of ten PM till eight AM, except on the weekends would be twelve AM to eight AM.
It says two.
She has the old version. It's no different. I'll read you the new version. And you, once again, you can get copies of this, Tammy. Additionally, we have similar periods on holidays where you're allowed to go a little bit longer. Under the short term license, short term rental license requirements require all entities in order to have a license prior to being able to operate as a short term rental. If you have any outstanding code or other violations within the township, you're not going to be able to hold the license. And you're going to be required to renew it annually at any time at which, well, annually, you get it sometime where you're going to have to renew it in the next cycle. Separate licenses are required for each and every short term rental that you operate. There's not one overarching license for multiple units. They're going to be issued to the owner of the property. We're going to put together some forms that are required for that. If you have multifamily or multi dwelling unit, so you have a whole house of five or six in the house, you're going to have to have five or six different licenses. And there'll be inspections that are necessary. You're not able to transfer a license for one owner at the next either. We talked about the contact person already, and then who needs to be available? But of the many information that you would think you would need in a comprehensive application, the number of bedrooms, photographs needed, floor plans, and everything. What we want to do is make sure is that we can designate through the information on the application, the total number of people that will be able to be within the short term rental that will be able to rent it. That way you can't pack thirty people into a ten person property. Tammy already has the proposed application, it appears. Very pretty. I'll read it later. And there'll be an inspection fee in the event, now we're not going to be going inspections like the city area does for the rental inspections, that is not what this ordinance is contemplating. This ordinance is contemplating inspections only in the event of the township is aware of information in the application that is inaccurate. We reasonably believe it is inaccurate and we're going to send out for inspection arrangements with those additional fees. There will be application fees, there will be renewal fees. What are the standards?
Sir, I'm sorry, I'm taking it off, excuse me. Will we go to the next questions when we're all done?
Supervisor, form.
Okay, I just have a question, how do I do just?
Ask it now, while we're there.
Okay, so the individual has to be available twenty four hours, has to be in an application. What about the neighbors being notified? Do we get that information? So if we have an issue, or are we supposed to call the police? So there's a party at three AM and they're?
Oh, if there's a party at three AM and they're about to enter the noise warning, that's a, that's a point, so you have the ability to call state police. If there's something that's going on that you don't have response, then they often are noise, so much we can do about that.
I know our police have much bigger things to do, by all means, I'm not looking to call the police. I'm just saying, would it be required that neighbors would also have that twenty four hour?
That contact information is for the township, that is, the person who is responsible, the township notifying them of zoning ordinance or of violations. So if you have, you know, so the question was asking me how do you prove a noise violation at two in the morning? Right, so I have a dog that lives one block away, one block south, and like a thousand yards to the west of my house. It's not just a dog, it's a property that breeds border collars. And we have, I live in a very good township, we do the zoning ordinance, and these things are all the time. So my neighbors and I go out with our cell phones and we sit there and we take a picture of our watch to show what time it is, and then we sit there and we get recorded and we listen. And we hear bark, 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 and we'll turn it into the township. And so how do you prove a noise violation when there isn't Tammy working at two AM in the morning? I would do that. And then provide us with a valid data file. It's the most practical way. We talked about decibel heaters, nobody has a decimal. Unless you have a decimal heater laying around your house, that's not practical. So that's the most practical way in which to enforce that.
I want to correct, I want to say, you said you can call state police until you blew the face. They will not come out for a noise warning.
I believe I know what you said.
No, you said you could call nine one one, call.
I didn't, couldn't call, I didn't anticipate we're going to get a response.
Right, they will not come out for any warning.
Hundred percent.
What about parking?
We'll get there.
A lot that doesn't contain all the cars.
We'll get, we'll get there.
Okay.
We're just getting into this stuff right now. Little panel aside, that's wrong, I guess. All right, so we need to, according to these standards, we need to limit the overnight occupancy to the specific numbers that are permitted. It is a calculation of the number of bedrooms and the number of beds, you know, a whole bunch of kids, but not seven to eight per bedroom. We need to make sure that the owner maintains a log of the tenants. Yes, it's not, the number two on my book is not, mine is not in what you're seeing, but it says the owner shall maintain a log of tenants of corresponding rental dates that should be made available to the township for inspection upon request. We limit the number of day guests, so you can't go out and rent a property by a whole bunch of people or a party, they have to be limited to the number of people that are made to be rented. We do limit the number of bedrooms. There's a sewage enforcement component to that. If you have an online system that's only regulated for ten people, not going to fill the house up to forty people, that's going to present some sort of environmental challenges that we only have to deal with. With respect to the number of vehicles, you are to limit the number of vehicles of overnight occupants and day guests to a number designated in short term rental license, with the number of all vehicles not to exceed the number of designated onsite parking spaces. So we ensure that we calculate how many parking spaces there are on the property and then ensure that the number of cars are going to be limited to that.
They've already had parties there, but the automobile parking has been overfilling down the street.
I'm sure. We want to make sure that, you know, we regulate the size of the parking spots, we regulate that they've got, you know, they can't be parked in the grass, it can't be mud, they've got to be gravel, you know.
So they can't be on the road either?
We are indicating that you have to have a number of, the number of vehicles has to be limited to the number of parking spots that are online. Need to make sure that we're taking the best efforts to not to not create unreasonable anomalies, which we defined in that previous section, right? Where we talked about 2:00 a.m. person midnight. We resolved that it wasn't that. Lights from exterior illumination have to be kept on in your property. Again, you can't have these big bright lights that are going to bleed over your neighbors and everything. We're not going to allow recreational vehicles, camper trailers, and everything. With respect to open fires, if you have a fire pit or whatever in the backyard, you need to make sure that you comply with the currently existing some township ordinance. But they're all going to be extinguished by midnight, which I believe is the correct ordinance, as it is now. So we need to make sure we post a copy of the license of the particular property. We need to post some notices at the property, including the name of the contact person, telephone number for the contact person, the total number of guests that are occupants that are permitted to stay, the maximum number of day guests, the max amount of vehicles. And then indicates there that we won't be parking in the public right way. The number of location of onsite parking spots. Indication as to what to do with trash. Notification that owner occupants may be cited by finding creative disturbances and violations of the provisions of the ordinance. Notification that failing to conform to the parking is a violation of ordinance as per law. We specifically indicate that it is unlawful for any person to disturb the peace and the neighborhood of a person or family if they have loud or unusual noises or fight tumultuous or offensive conduct, helping decency, threatening, traducing, corollary, challenging to fight, or fighting, traducing is basically disparaging one's conduct or one's character. I haven't looked up the great word. Short-term rentals should comply also with all applicable building codes count reference the number of functioning fire detectors. Smoke detectors, I'd say fire detectors, smoke and or fire detectors. There's an enforcement officer that would be in place. Inspections are necessary if we find information or that's untrue, or if we've gone a recent belief that ordinance is being violated. If you're going to be marketing the property, you need to market the particular conditions that you have in place. You have to know how many vehicles, how many people, and everything. So if you go to the RDO or Airbnb and you see the property, you can see it's limited to 12 people because that's where our license says you're limited to. With respect to complaints, if there's violations that are provided to us, we're going to do our best to enforce those. If there's false reports, false reports are in and of themselves violations of the ordinance. We have provisions in here relative to notice from the violators. In this case, we can cite either the occupants or the owners or anticipate that we're going to be citing owners because oftentimes there is going to be violations occurring on weekends. But nobody's going to be around to be doing any citations because we have the abilities to deliver. Most of the time, these people are going to be gone. And as the owners ultimately were operating that particular facility, we need to make sure that they're operating in compliance. If you are a repeat violator, if the owner commits the same or similar violation three or more times within six months, then you don't have to provide any notice or any particular other enforcement actions. Those enforcement actions include a license verification. So if the owner's convicted of three violations, obviously convicted here because we may be summary offenses, or we may violate the provisions for Court of Magisterial District Justice the same way that we enforce our neighbors' compliance. If you're three convictions within any willing 12-month period, then the license will be revoked for one year. There is an appeal function. There is an appeal function because the administrative agency law requires that there be an appeal function. And that's it. So based on our review of all of the rec, the ordinances that we can find in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that we've done to be similar with municipalities that are similarly situated, we believe this to be one of the more comprehensive approaches being taken in the Commonwealth.
I have a suggestion, I can see it up there. Would you consider fining the owner if they violate these?
There's fines included.
Pardon me?
There are fines included, I believe up to $1,000. I just didn't read it.
Yes?
Yeah, I have a question. Ron McIlroy, 1426 Bonnarosa Drive. Yeah, the, it's a little distinction in this, in this ordinance, which I think is a good, good ordinance. The noise chart that was in there with the days of the week and the hours of the day, I wanted to go back to that because it's very specific in the way it's worded as to how you hear that noise. If you read that paragraph up there, it says that it's, it's, you have to be near the property. I believe it's written at the property boundary, is that true? An unaided human ear at any boundary line of a lot or parcel. Sound that is plainly audible. We're not talking about necessarily loud noises. We're talking about sound that emanates from that property that you can hear, the unaided human ear.
That's what we're, during those hours, that is what we're determining to be unreasonable noise.
Right, and then go to section 813.
Now, if I may also point out that as for a continuous period in excess of 15 minutes, you've got baby screaming.
Understood.
You know, pretending, I mean, 14 minutes and 59 seconds, we end up here.
Then there's another section in there with 813 about the rowdy behavior, the loud noise, challenging, fighting, that sort of thing. That takes place at any time, if my understanding is correct. In other words, at any time, day or night, someone is carrying on like that. I think it's, I think it's 713.
It is, yeah, 13. On your, well, page ten. Just go. Introduce.
Right there.
You were there, you were there.
Person with louder unusual noises or by tumultuous and offensive conduct. I take that to be any time of the day.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. The second question I really had deals with enforcement. And I know we're going to do the best, the very best we can do as a township. I'm convinced of that. But I do know that there are several short-term rentals, for example, in Mill Creek. And they don't seem to be too active about enforcing some of those, well, the ordinance that they have. And if it's a problem with Mill Creek with a standing police force, I'm concerned for some in that regard. So again, I don't know, I wish I could offer a quick solution to that too, but I just, I just bring the point simply because I am concerned about it. And I do know that, you know, state police are very reluctant, very hesitant to respond to these, these complaints. And I'll just leave it at that.
And recourse for any problems don't seem to be there. The police don't come, who do you call? You have close busters?
Yeah.
Call, call Tammy. And then the issue will be investigated. If there's a finding that there's been a violation of the ordinance, then an enforcement notice can be sent. If it's not complied with, the citation can be filed. If we have more than three convictions within annual and 12-month period, then the license can be revoked. But there... Yeah, and, and it's, I mean, it doesn't, if a violation, violations occurring before in the morning, I mean, you're not going to get through to Tammy unless you're for silver. Which will be happy to pass out right now. But the, you know, we can do it after the fact as well. And that's why I suggested, you know, you stand on your property, you turn on your phone, you record the, the noise, disturbance, or whatever it is, because that's proof of the fact. And then we have to go through and do a conviction or do a hearing before the Magisterial District Justice. We're going to call you in and be witness, play your video. Yes, ma'am?
So if the license gets revoked based on violations or convictions for a period of one year, does that then wipe out the grandfathering because they would not be able to operate as an Airbnb for a camp, for a period of one year?
What's that, listen?
Had?
Very, what's that?
Well, I think the rule is that would be yes.
The answer is yes.
And if this particular ordinance, which is very detailed, thank you, I think Tammy proposed it last time, or we were talking about it last time, so thank you for all your hard work on that. If this is ruled on and accepted tonight, do, does this ordinance have to go under review then? Or is it effective tomorrow?
Yeah, so what is being considered by the supervisors today is the authorization to advertise. So under the second-class township code, we're required to put a specific advertisement in the paper indicating that we're going to be considering a new law, a new ordinance. That needs to run a minimum of seven and a maximum of 60 days prior to when we're actually going to consider it. So they can't consider it tonight. Tonight was the, hey, this is what's being proposed. Is this something you think you might consider? And if so, let's get an advertisement on the book so we can consider it at the next meeting. So this is a June 6 consideration. So if, if the supervisor say, yes, this is something we think we want to go for, then they'll vote in favor of it tonight. We'll prepare the advertisement, get it to the paper, and then it'll be before the board for approval on June 6. The effective date is... Very, and I'm scrolling down, five days after approval. So if it's approved June 6, then we'll look for a June 12 approval. June 11, 12, and 18 days. Or not approval, but effective date.
At that time, five days after the approval, there is no law, if there was no bed and breakfast or Airbnb in my neighborhood, they have to comply with all these new rules? Are they, you have to?
So, so let's, yeah, so let me, let me clarify some of that. June, June 12, you can't call Tammy and complain about a party because we've got to get everybody licensed first. So there will be a process through which everyone gets licensed and a deadline by which everybody needs to be licensed. If there's a new bed and breakfast that proposes June 12 that they want to open up, they, they need to fill out the application for the existing bed, or bed and breakfast.
Airbnb.
It's been a long, is it probably a short? The short-term, for existing short-term rentals, we'll establish a date by which they have to comply and file the first license application. I forget what it is. You might even have to amend the ordinance a little bit, but then, I think we forgot that, Tammy. Yeah, put the application in. So we'll put a provision in there in case that anybody who's currently operating has to have a license in by September 1st, or, you know, something to give everybody enough time in which to do it. So we, we, you got to give us some time to get this thing rolling, but it's being done faster than the city government is.
So if somebody applied tomorrow, they could get their Airbnb?
No, it's, it's, well, I mean, right now, the rule doesn't exist. The rule won't exist until the ordinance is, is approved.
Well, what in the interim, that's my point.
There's nothing we can do, there's no, there's no law.
In regards to these people's situation on Bonnarosa Drive, as of June 12, if those captains try to become an Airbnb, would they be licensed, or they have to comply with every rule that's up there?
It, well, the good news is that those captains can't be constructed between now and June 12. So if there's going to be a zoning application for the construction and operation of a short-term rental, by the time it is constructed and up and ready to go, this license process will be in place, and they'll have to comply. Much like any of the existing ones, the, the woman who's talking about having three or whatever it is in our neighborhood today, each one of those will have to apply and receive a license by whatever date it is that we determine. And pay the fee if, if, if.
I have a question. Um, my name is Ella. So who determines that a short-term rental is not a business?
You're, you're really on a, you're really on a cutting edge in law regarding this. We are currently...
It's not a business?
Look, we're currently pushing this, we, we are, the, the rules that are being considered and contemplated are within the allowances of Pennsylvania law as it exists today, in a conservative manner. Now, there's no, there's no edges being pushed. The question of what is and what is a business and what is and what is not commercial use is one that is still being worked out.
So it's not related to whether or not they have to file taxes or anything to that, or the active management of it?
There's no case law on that right now.
How do we get that? Why does there have to be?
Somebody has to sue.
So if, say I joined a family and neighbors with this attorney, who would we sue? The person that owns the Airbnb, or the township, or?
No, township, township. One of my type, I talk to myself at work. It's a weird job, I have to advise my clients how to use me less, yeah.
Right.
There is a private right of action.
Okay.
There's a, there's a Commonwealth court case that was up shortly after this life of life, Supreme Court case in which private residents violate private cause of action underneath the existing zoning ordinance against the property owner and operator. And, and that would be the route, I think that that would be done. And that private right of action would probably be related to, you know, the, the, based on what you were saying, the determination that they're operating a business, the commercial use business in a residential neighborhood.
But how? So if, if we can't run a business in our neighborhood based on zoning, et cetera, how do you determine it's a model business? I mean, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, so I'm not your lawyer, so you got to be careful what I say. That is cutting-edge law on short-term rentals in Pennsylvania, and the question is not settled. I have personal opinions, I have personal legal theories. They're not established in law. You never want a case named after you because it's very expensive. Always want to have it at that. Mr. Wilder, if there's something else?
You did a very nice job. I echo what you stated. You did a very nice job with the, the rules here. I mean, no question. I also commend Karen's comments on, on that because I just want you to consider, you know, take the emotion out of it, running a business with five businesses on your road. You think about that. We have little kids, but people coming in and out of the neighborhood we don't know. They're driving fast, there's garbage everywhere, drinking all over the place. And that's true, I don't mind a few drinks at 4:00 a.m. You know, but, I mean, so we're all trying very hard to take the emotion out of this and look at the facts. The facts are that it's five. It's diminishing the value of everything we've worked so hard for, and it's a liability and a risk. So, and it's a, oh, and it's a business.
I just have one question.
Yes?
Uh, does the deed dictate what can or can't be done with the property? I'm a 50-year resident.
Your subdivision.
I'm a 50-year resident, and I have the original deed. My dad was a builder up there in the 70s. And when this, when the subject of the daycare came up, I brought the indenture, and it said no short-term rentals. Does that no longer apply? I mean, I have a copy of it, I didn't bring it tonight. Does that no longer apply to our subdivision?
It's kind of like a deed restriction, it's right in your indenture.
Right, so does that apply for this? I mean, the deed is a deed.
Please do. Yeah, so, if a deed is a private property restriction on the use of the property, that is only able to be enforced by the other, by others that are similarly situated.
But her deed must say the same thing.
Her deed must say the same thing. So what that means is, if your deed says you cannot have a property that...
That's my next issue.
If you, if you have a property, if the deed restriction says you can't put a forty-five-hundred-square-foot home on the property, then somebody proposes to do that, the township doesn't get involved in that. The neighbors do, the neighbors have a private right of enforcement as a, as a private property issue, because what is being proposed as a use in that particular neighborhood is not permitted by the deed restrictions. Same thing, if your deed specifically says, and every deed in that neighborhood specifically says, that thou shall not operate a short-term rental,
That's what mine says.
Then that is a private right of enforcement. So in the city of Erie, for example, in the city of Erie, for example, there is a proposal on the books to allow short-term rentals everywhere, no restriction, other than having a license under their tenet of registration ordinance. There are two neighborhoods in the city of Erie that have homeowners associations, both of which are contemplating changing the rules to prohibit short-term rentals within their homeowners association, to try to achieve what you already have, and that is a restriction on the use, but the township doesn't get involved in that, that's a private property restriction.
Even though it said it's Crestview Heights, or whatever we were referring to. Whatever we was on at View Heights, whatever we referred to back in nineteen sixty-nine.
It's a private, it's a, it's you enforcing your private property rights as protected by your deed.
But wouldn't her deed say the same thing, no short-term rentals?
More than likely, but you would have to pull over deed and take a look at it, and then hire a lawyer and have a private enforcement of that.
I was under the impression, I don't know why, because I don't know a lot. But, a deed is a deed is a deed, and that's, that original deed passes on to the next owner. It never leaves that deed, so if that deed says...
No short-term rentals.
No short-term rentals, or, if you're building any kind of structure on that property, it has to be a certain size, a certain distance from the road, a certain distance from each other property, and it has, it's a certain square foot per floor. So if it's like the first one, it has to be...
Twelve hundred.
Then it has to be twelve hundred square feet, then they both have to be twelve hundred square feet.
You're absolutely...
And they have to be a certain, they have to be a certain distance between the, the lawn and between those two cabins.
I'm going to agree with you generally that what's written in the deed on day one stays with the deed until the end of time. There is a process to clear that up, change that, but generally that doesn't happen. However, I go back to my previous statement, it's a private right of enforcement. The township does not enforce deed restrictions.
Well, how do we enforce them?
Hire a lawyer.
That's it.
Is the homeowners association still active at all up there?
They never were.
They never, they never.
In nineteen sixty-nine, we were supposed to have paved streets, street lamps.
We're supposed to have streetlights, gray streets, but we still remember. It's been fifty years, I'm still waiting for it.
So how good is that, you know, association?
Because I live in a township that, you know, had a homeowners association, and it worked very well. But, you know, that was twenty years ago.
Yeah.
And probably within the last ten years, the homeowners association had dawned, and nobody really adheres to the association.
I think when the gentlemen that owned all the property up there sold all the lots, that was the end of the association. Yeah, it was one of those cases.
Similar case to where I live also.
Well, I'm still waiting for the streetlights.
Homeowners, the landowners trying to run it anymore.
Well, no.
Nederweiler, no.
Nederweiler.
I was also born and raised up in that area.
Nederweiler.
Yes.
There were cows on our, there were cows, it'd make work.
Yes, I remember that one. Yes.
If the original deed for twelve fifty-nine Conneville Drive, which is now an Airbnb, if that states what Karen was saying, can we, can that be eliminated?
It's a private right of enforcement, you need to hire a lawyer, sue them for violation of the deed restriction.
Does the township have a copy of those deeds?
No.
It's a deed book. You should have one. And if you don't, you could then give them the course.
Okay, I think we have a motion and a, or a motion and a second, all those in favor of approving or denying the advertisement for the short-term rental ordinance adoption.
Proven, I.
Okay, and I vote aye. So we get that advertised and get that all on? Okay, Mr. Solicitor, do you have anything to say?
Spoken more than, spoken more today than I have in three years, I mean. Jack, did you want me to cover something?
Sure, yeah. Well, our negotiations with Perry Highway on our MOU, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so, the township and Perry Highway Host Company entered into an MOU in July of twenty nineteen that speaks to the manner in which the township provides some funding to the fire department. The funding that is provided largely comes from the local services tax and the gaming revenue issued by the state and the Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority. That allocation that the township gives is essentially, at this point, seventy-two thousand dollars a month. And about eight-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars a year, specifically eight-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars a year. That particular MOU expires at the end of June. The second-class township code is fairly specific as to what a township's obligation is to fund a a volunteer fire department company. And that obligation is limited to paying for the workers' compensation insurance for the volunteers. However, there is an obligation for the township and the fire department to sit down and meet and discuss the use of township relative to what services are required, and then township can make a determination as to how much they're able to support, how much they're willing to support. So in the past, township has determined that they're willing to support a eight-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars a year. The Perry Highway's host company has made a request that that be increased almost fifty percent. Looking at, let me get to the right number. Yeah, about one-point-three-three-seven million dollars a year. And, so anyway, we've met and discussed it, I've given some legal review to all the supervisors, and in conversation with Mr. Lee, we are going to send a response to Perry Highway's host company, recommending that we give an extension on the current MOU, the current funding levels through the end of the year. Largely the reason for that is because the, like, it'd be like, largely because the, the reasons for that is because the amount that is being requested is vastly exceeds the amount that the township has budgeted, and that this would put it on a budget plan. We would put it in the same cycle as the township budget, so that we'd be able to consider that. Additionally, there's a significant number of efforts underway that we all are aware of, the EMS crisis that's going on in voluntary fire departments. The county is trying to tackle different, you know, agencies are trying to tackle this issue, we need to give them a little bit more time to figure out what the long-term funding, the long-term plan is going to be. So the recommendation is, in addition to requesting a little bit more financial information from the, from the fire department to better understand what they currently use the money for, the money will be going, we can get it in a long-term budget. I mean, one-point-three-three-seven million is a lot of money, it's what a quarter of the township's budget as it is. So, we're going to be requesting some more information to get a better understanding as to how to use the money, how they want to use the money. And then in addition, to make sure that they have, because their service is very well appreciated, so that they have some consistency and confidence in the money for at least the next six months, centering the six months extension under the current terms of seventy-two thousand dollars a month, so that continues. That'll put us back under the budget cycle, let us tackle this in a little more comprehensive fashion. So, that is the recommendation, and we'll be drafting that, and I can put it out for Mr. Lee to signature under short-term basis. Any questions from the supervisors on that? Mr. Lee, do you have a second?
No, thank you.
Do they, does the fire department have the same solicitor that they did before, they're returning?
Well, I believe so, Ward.
Yeah, so can you help me get on these conversations as well?
I'm sure you will.
So you see them on?
I, I was, I think we just get a letter together and have Jack send it on behalf of the township, and then we have an opportunity to sit down and have those negotiations. Of course, we would encourage Perry Highway's bringing their solicitors, so we'd get down to RAS tax and some language, absolutely. I don't want to make it a legal issue, I'm assisting in the negotiation, the contract is more of a policy issue. So I think that Jack should be leading it.
Okay, wonderful.
I truly have nothing further.
Matthew, just real quick. Amara Road Phase Two Sidewalk Project is just about complete. Amagola did the seeding and mulching last week and the restoration of the landscape areas, so we're waiting for that to sprout some grass. And then their subcontractor came out last Friday and made the line-striking for the crosswalks. Last remaining thing we have is to put up paddle signs and the crosswalk signs, and our crew's going to be doing that. I had one call in, so that should happen this week at the earliest. The Dove's Parkway paving project, that is slated to start Tuesday after Memorial Day, May thirty-first. Weather depending, it should be a pretty quick project, hopefully we can get in and out before we cause too much havoc. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Lee?
Yeah, I, I know I read Matt's letter, and I was just wondering, with the complaints on Addison, Julian, how does it ever get, how does it ever get started, what initiated it? Because it isn't like Peach Street where we got huge roofs and black, a huge amount of blacktop and all. I mean, it's an old neighborhood there, and I didn't know, really, we didn't realize what was going on, other than I thought the ditch needed cleaning for drainage, but I'd never known of any flooding or anything.
We originally thought it was just a leftover sediment basin and/or ditch, because all the drawings that we had prior showed it as such, it was either a ditch or a pipe, so we thought we were within our rights within the easement to go in there and pipe it. The plan was, was to use our forces, our materials that we had on hand, so it would be a minimal cost to the township. It's something we could have done as we had time. Then as we researched the easement to make sure we had every, all of our ducts on the road, that's when we discovered the plans for the detention basin, and it kind of changed everything. So, that being a detention basin, there are requirements, restrictions on it, what you can and cannot do, you cannot just get rid of it. It would lead to viability issues for the township, because if you get rid of the detention basin, and now there's flooding downstream, now we have to answer the lawsuits and so on and so forth.
What was the stormwater management ordinance about the Dove's in Erie County, question?
Our current ordinance is twenty nineteen, I believe the first original one was either eighty-nine or ninety. We operated under the ninety-one ordinance until two thousand and twelve, when we adopted our, kind of our current rendition, which we have today. And I tried trying to find the deal ordinance, but we've organized the office since then, I don't know where they get it from. But I'll find that, and that one, it put the responsibility on the property owner, because any stormwater fund we have prior to nineteen ninety, there's no agreement in place. There's four of them that we know, this being the fourth one that we just discovered. There might be other ones out there, but all the hundred-and-thirty-one, thirty detention basins we have now, we have maintenance agreements, we monitor them, and we're going actually pretty good on that. I think we have thirty percent non-compliance as of now, but we have thirty or forty letters out right now to the property owners. And as far as the threat of the liens, we've only ever leaned two properties, and that was because of, the one, they just ignored us, so we had to go and do the work, and we had to lean on the other one. So, the owner goes into witness protection every time we contact them, and we can never track them down, and we finally had to lean on that property. So, as far as the threat of the lien, we have to put it in there just to cover all the bases, but it's not really a threat, it's just spelling out what happens in the event, eventualities. And I don't expect to ever get there with this.
Okay.
Remember your comment on that?
Yes.
Do you have an easement?
We do, we do have an agreement on easement, so we do not have what it says we can and cannot do.
It's really no employment, pretty much. If you have no agreement, it's worthless.
It's shown on a recorded subdivision plan, so...
The thing is, is that for twenty-five years that this is, twenty-some years that this has been, and nothing's ever been done. So, you know, you've never taken care of it.
Correct.
You know, I can see if you had some skin in the game, and you put some money into it over the years, and said, listen, this is getting costly, we have to change it, because the new regulations, that's different. Now, we're, we're starting from scratch, and all of a sudden, we gotta make all the changes, and oh, guess what, we gotta pay for it. It's just not right. This was, when you say orphan, it's only an orphan because nobody took...
Including some.
Nobody took any responsibility for it. And, you know, at the time, the township was the smarter person of the deals going on with that developer. So, at that time, they should have caught that.
Correct.
Okay, so, you know, again, it falls back on us. Now, if it is our responsibility, then why don't we just plug the tube, reclaim the land, and you can figure out what to do with the stormwater, do in the DEP? We don't have to.
Your house would not have been allowed to be built without that.
No, no, it's built now, I'm saying that from here on, if you're shoving it on us, then that means it's ours. We can do with what we want. And we can plug the tube, because you can't enforce it. I mean, we're just saying, what are you gonna enforce? You're gonna enforce something that you don't have a plan on.
We do have a plan, we...
You have a plan now, you might have a plan, but you don't have a plan existing for that tube, you can't just...
No, we have an existing plan.
And what is it?
I don't have it with me right now, but if you want to stop in the office.
Doesn't it include maintenance? That never happened?
The ordinance fact that they include the maintenance, the maintenance is always been a property owner's responsibility.
Well, why, when all these discussions came up, you never said, I'm sorry, it's your responsibility? Everybody that came out said, you know, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of that, we're gonna put that on our schedule, we're gonna do that. You never said, I'm sorry, it's not our responsibility.
You didn't know what it was.
We did not know it was an approved stormwater management system until, it was like mid-March or April of this year. That's when we started.
It's not an approved management system.
We have the plan.
Of that, of that orphan plan, so then it's yours?
No, the township never accepted it.
You approved it.
But we never accepted it as a township on.
Well, how could you write off, how could you sign off on all the plans? How could you sign off on all the plans?
We sign off on a hundred-and-thirty of them, we don't own any of them.
But if you don't own, and we don't own...
We sign off that the plan meets the requirements of the ordinance and thereby is approved. It is a responsibility of the property owner from that day on to maintain that stormwater.
Does it say that at the beginning, that when the developer turned it over? Did you come to that agreement?
That's the order.
This is the responsibility of the homeowners.
Correct. It's written. It's written in the ordinances that we've had since we started stormwater management in the nineties.
I don't have a letter when I found my house that I was responsible, the neighbor that is directly adjacent to it doesn't have anything that says he's responsible. So where, when are these people told of you? And I'm not trying to...
I've been here for ten years, so...
Turning the clock of time back to try to figure out how did that happen is not always the easiest thing.
And we've been spending months trying to do that.
All right, at the very least, if possible, is this something that could be considered, where the township could pay for the initial cleaning, and we're meeting halfway here, and we will take care of it from there on? I'm throwing out the olive branch, you know...
And those are discussions we'll have to have, but you also just heard that the twenty-five percent of the budget is being requested by the fire department, there's a whole lot of money left to go around.
There's none.
Well, this township's not destined to, you know, we're talking between five and twelve thousand dollars. I'm just throwing it out there for you to consider.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Davis?
The perks are doing well, the grass is growing fast. Everything's looking good for the summertime, and we do have a new tenant in a concession stand back here. He's going to run a concession stand this summer, so that'll be a new thing. You know, we've had anybody at a concession stand for years, so that'll be nice. Everybody's looking forward to, you know, get something to drink or eat back there. Nothing, I don't really say much to Trump as well, so thanks for coming.
We got Hammer Road paved from Hershey to the I N U Bridge while they had the road closed down, so it gave us an opportunity to get some work done. We'll be working over there this week as well, while the roads closed, cutting some trees, doing a little more storm work. Spring cleanup was Friday and Saturday, it was a very busy Friday. Saturday was steady, but I think a lot of people had an opportunity to bring a lot of their stuff, and worked out well. That's about it for right now, so... Public input? Yes, Jim?
Do you want me to come up or can I sit?
Yes, yes, why don't you sit?
I complained to you there on the twenty-first of March about the letter in my backyard, with the picture of the construction bringing my backyard through my woods.
Correct.
It's two months later, and I've driven around on my motorcycle, cars, and my car, and there are numerous violations in this township, yet Kip does not catch. Okay, there's one on the end of this road.
Kip has a pretty good laundry list, I don't know if you see the list, Jim, but it's amazing how many letters have come out.
It's not looking from backyards, I'm telling you. At the end of this road, a house was demolished three to five years ago, and the refrigerator or freezer is still laying on the ground next to the new house. Three to five years, you're ready to downtown, but there's no reason for this. He should be doing his job. People have piles of stuff in their backyard blatantly sticking out. There's two of them on Robinson Road, burn piles with construction lumber. It's against the law on our township burning ordinance. He drives to that fire department constantly, he's got his blinders on. Finally, today I went over to Mr. McAllen's office, and you guys are taking the occupant of seven fifty-one Johnson Road to court. Finally, that blue vehicle's been sitting there for six months. I've been on to him for six months on that. There's another one on Johnson Road that they've been there twenty years, eight-twenty Johnson Road. Tony tells me Sunday that he's got empty plates for him. There's no way there's empty plates on those cars. I don't care what he's doing, he's fooling you, asking for an insurance card. We don't have an insurance card, they can't go on the road. And we all know those cars can't go on the road because they're sunk into the ground, but nobody does anything. Why do we have this guy? Back to the ordinance about that noise situation. The state police will not enforce Tony's issues or ordinances. Tony and I had that discussion with a female officer, Kip McCann, about people doing burnouts on the road. And you're exactly right, Mr. Lawyer, the cops aren't coming. Our company force the guy, doesn't do his job. But you guys don't do anything about him, nobody regulates the guy.
I had a conversation with Lauren, I had a conversation with Lauren talking about assault avoidance and a blue vehicle on Johnson Road.
You're right, I said, I went to Mr. McAllen's office and charged him a file today.
Yes. He had a couple days, it was a long winter, and it was a wet spring, and he had been in contact with us. We have a running call report with him, and when he was going to get it out, and, you know, I gave him enough dates, and I filed today, Mark was probably going to be there with a gentleman that you're talking about.
You're right, but that blue car was there for six months that I saw. It's not my job to tell you about it, it's Kip's job.
No, and we've been in contact with him, and we have phones if you want to look at the call report, but the gentleman was in there for like four months.
That's not my problem, that's not your problem. If he doesn't respond, you file wherever, somebody owns the house. Your mansion is the law.
He's renting that house, and you know he files, so...
But he doesn't do his job, guys, somebody needs to watch him. And if he's not doing his job, Mark, when you work for your father, if you didn't do your job, you get fired. You know, Jeff, if you didn't do your job, you got fired off the job as a union group member. Simple as that, he doesn't do his job. So either somebody's got to start watching this guy, or we need somebody new. Enforce the rules on everybody that's breaking the rules, or don't enforce the rules on anybody, because we don't want to do, he can't do it, but he can do it, and that's what we're getting right now.
And I guess, just in Kip's defense, I can tell you that I get all of his reports, and they're lengthy. I mean, he, I know you say he doesn't do anything, but that's not the case. Kip has a log, I believe, Cammy makes him turn it in?
Weekly.
Weekly? He's busy, you know, I know you don't want to hear that, but the amount of calls that he does, and goes after people is...
They go over there, it's not enforced, nobody's getting to Mr. McAllen's office. That's the only reports you have. If they clean it up, that's fine too. Town Hall Village, I complained about, they put a gray tarp over it. Does that solve the problem? The junk is still under the gray tarp. On EMS Drive and Honeysuckle, not Honeysuckle. I said the road, and I can't tell you.
A green tree.
Green tree. The only junk they got cleaned up was around the water room. But he put a big gray tarp over everything else, or he wouldn't put the gray tarp over anything.
Okay, is there any other public comments? Yes?
Yes, regards to the fire department?
Yes.
I wanted to ask, are we able to solicit financial statements from them and a forecast?
We received their lot, you know, we received...
So fire financial period, a forecast that would help the township with the increases related to? Are we obligated to present?
Budget, why not, just budget, why not into the... Part of what we're doing, it's part of the letters.
Yeah, right.
They've got a list of things we want to consider. Information we need.
Yeah, so a forecast, I think, would be very useful.
One of the things that has been suggested is that we're being asked for a three-year funding commitment, we're going to ask for a three-year budget.
But this is a huge hit on this township, the one point three million dollars. You know, I know everybody thinks that the township's extremely wealthy, and, you know, we're just loaded, you know, paper roads and gold and everything else, but it's amazing how much goes out. So people need to be aware that this one is a big one, and it's going to be interesting.
I have one comment on that, just quickly, I know we've run it for a long time, but the, would it be helpful to understand how similar, how townships of a similar size to Summit, as a percentage of their overall budget, are committed to their volunteer fire department?
Jack has been in contact with ten townships? Ten different townships from, you know, Erie County, Mercer County, similar-sized townships, you know, trying to get a feel for, you know, what other people are doing. You know, Perry Highway really gets abused with the mutual aid, which is a law that we have to provide to other municipalities, but, you know, we're seeing sixty mutual aid calls a month, and they're, I mean, even today, I mean, well, just sitting here now, I don't know, four, you know, fire calls already, US calls come in, and, you know, we're getting dragged to all corners of Erie County, Anne Crawford County, because we're the only ones that have really stepped up to provide a service, and Perry Highway's doing everything they can, but at the same time, you know, we're concerned as supervisors for Summit Township, not Northeast, Corvey, you know, Purord, Elvia, you know, we feel for them, but, you know, we're doing everything we can do to keep the balls up in the air, and it's been a struggle the last three years now with this going up twice. Getting a little spooky.
Yeah, it's difficult, and I sympathize with you in the position that you're in, believe.
Just yesterday, I was coming back from Waterford around five o'clock, here comes an ambulance toward me, and right behind it, the other one, two Perry Highway ambulances bumper to bumper hitting, so now we have no one to pick us up, we have a problem. So that's, those are the things I worry about, today if somebody really needs an ambulance badly, and they're not here, then we can't explain nothing.
Yeah, it's very difficult, EMS is just nationwide, there's a dilemma, I don't know who knows what to do.
We can't be the only township, though, and I understand the mutual aid predicament. What do you do? You can't let somebody die in the highway, you know?
Well, I understand, and Erie County's got to step up, because mutual aid is outside of your township. Well, I believe not a problem, helping our four neighbors, Waterford, McCain, Mill Creek, and Green, but we've been, we've been to Northeast for a heart attack, downtown Northeast, drive through four municipalities. If I was having a heart attack, I'd try driving myself to the hospital, or ask the first person I've seen if they'd give me a ride. We've been to Union City for the same thing, heart attack, laceration. I said, Jesus, they're cut that bad, they're going to die before you get there. Someone better be able, you know, give them some first aid, direct pressure or what have you. A lady in Lake City about three, four weeks ago had a heart attack. A known person with heart problems, and, you know, how many, how many fire departments didn't answer the call for Perry Highway to go to Lake City?
Maybe they're waiting for you to answer.
Why can't you backcharge those townships?
Well, there's a lot of that too, but I didn't want to have a turtleneck.
I would say, you know, majority of our mutual aid calls are down in the city area, and there's no, you know, they don't have insurance, you can...
It's tough.
You know, they can't get, you know, we can't get any money out of them because they don't have any money. So, you know, I get where you're coming from, it's definitely been looked at, you know, just charge some sort of a fee, but...
Not to the individual, but to the township, if you're going to Lake Northeast.
I mean, the townships are, you know, ultimately responsible for the health and safety of their residents, and that's why we stepped up and we were hoping others would do the same thing, but to the best of my knowledge, you know, West County has a little service going with a few different companies. East County just started it up, I think it's like Herbert Creek, Wesleyville, maybe Lawrence Park or something like that, where they kind of pulled together. Starting to see a little bit of, you know, collaboration between townships, but this area out here is a public area.
And we need legislation to permit us to charge other municipalities. We don't have that legislation in place.
Yeah, but, you know, talk to them.
We could send bills all day long, we're not...
Not sending bills, discuss it.
Jack's been doing it.
Jack has been on recruitment, retention with the county, with the municipalities, with, they meet over the nine-one-one at least once a month, Zoom meetings, in-person meetings, for how many years now, Jack?
Three and a half.
Three and a half years, nobody can come up with a solution.
Two years ago, I sent a very informative letter to all our state legislators and the senator, not even a response. Sorry, we can't help you, we're working on it, and we're going to come up with something. Not one response, and I keep all this stuff in my documents too. I told them at the nine-one-one center, not because it's their fault, but I said, legislators are going to help us out because we're going to go broke, and then how do we answer to our public, you know, it's out of control, it's nuts. And like Mark said, that one weekend, we were in downtown Erie, five times, and some of them are bad, where it says, stand down, you know, shooting victim or something, wait for the police to arrive, and so then our ambulance goes in there and sets. And when they do answer a call, not to talk all night, but when they do answer a call, and they go to the hospital, it's a couple hours stay because they got to fill out all the paperwork, they got to clean the ambulance and get back, so they're out of service. And it really gets bad too, and this is just a pet peeve of mine. I broke my leg in Florida once, and I walked around for two days, it was pretty painful, I laid down, elevated my leg to get the swelling down, and I drove home, and my insurance wasn't very good, I thought, well, I guess I have to go to the hospital. So I went to the emergency room, and I waited another couple days for the swelling to go down, they put a cast on my leg. But nonetheless, my point is, here just about three weeks ago, there was a gentleman one block from St. Vincent Hospital, Perry Highway went in to pick him up because he's been constipated for six days. Now, are you kidding me? I would have crawled, I would have called a friend, anybody, take me to the emergency room, please. Oh, it's at Perry Highway, drive in Erie, pick him up a block away. And that's the kind of nonsense that's going on. And they did have a character, you can see them too, they'd fall down on the floor with a sprained ankle, they'd go pick him up, they did it to him three times, and on the way into Erie, you can drop me off here, I feel better, wanted a free ride.
Yeah.
And meanwhile, you or I might be having a heart attack, no ambulance, that's what's bad.
I might have to give you an indication that I'm going to be having a heart attack, say in two weeks, make sure you're...
Yes, it's really out of control. So, I'm sorry, but, you know, people need to know this.
I have a question, one, do we have a fire smoking ordinance or burning ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
What is it?
You have to get a...
We're going to get a burning permit, it doesn't cost anything, anybody can get a burning permit. We only allow a ten-by-ten area that you can burn with vegetative matter, you know, sticks.
So you need a permit to burn?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't fire.
We had two burning incidents, it was on a plot, it was a drive over the weekend. How do we know if a person has a permit?
You could call the zoning office, they keep a record of all the burn permits that people come in and get.
Okay, call them.
Yeah, if you call, say, hey, there's a fire at this address, you know, we'd be able to pull and see if there was a burn permit.
Campfire, though, campfires are, Cammy could know.
Campfires are okay, though.
Recreational campfires, sitting around, I mean, making s'mores is different than what we're talking about. We're talking about like yardways, yeah.
That's right, so all when that happens, when you see that?
And they'll let you know whether they have a permit, and if not, they'll go out and...
Make sure they have permits.
Make sure they have permits in the future.
Okay, and my last question is, how do we get copy records?
Stuff in my office, I can give you a copy.
Yeah, we don't have copies for you tonight, well, copies should be available the next day or so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
This is in regard to Kip. You all know I work here part-time, and the days that I'm here, there have been days that he has given me seven or eight violations to send out to people because they're doing something wrong. So I know he is doing... something wrong, so I know he is doing his job. That's all I want to say.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to have a little brief executive session after this meeting, for legal advice, there will be no action taken or anything, but I want to announce that we will be going into executive session after this meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.